What they have a power of influence in their order to.
Have to read through the.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Henry County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, October 19th meeting to order. Like to have the chaplain come forward.
It's a pleasure to be here this evening and I want to thank you for your patience. The pandemic has taught us all patience, but thankfully out of that patience we gain experience and then through that hope. So let's pray tonight and ask the Lord to bless our county in this meeting. Father in heaven, we thank thee Lord for this opportunity. We thank you Lord for our governmental leaders that you've allowed to be in certain positions of influence. Lord, your citizens of this county that labor and work. And Lord, may we unite tonight in a supportive fashion, looking at people and principle for what's right in moving in that direction. May you bless everyone here, may you give wisdom, may you give leadership, and Lord, we will thank thee and we'll praise thee. We ask your blessing upon this meeting in Jesus' name, amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Call the meeting to order. I have a proclamation, Stephanie, if you come forward.
Good evening Chair and Board members. I would like to read a proclamation recognizing the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas every year so many Americans are touched by the pain and hardship caused by breast cancer. And it's estimated that 281,550 women and more than 2,650 men are expected to be diagnosed with breast cancer by the end of 2021. And whereas breast cancer is the second most common form of cancer found in women in the United States and the second leading cause of cancer death overall among American women with a staggering 43,000 lives lost each year. Whereas many people have endured the heartbreak of losing someone to breast cancer. And it's the memories of those loved ones that drive us to find a cure. However, thanks to early detection and improved treatment options, deaths from breast cancer have decreased significantly in the last decade. Whereas all women are encouraged to talk to their healthcare providers about mammograms and other methods of early detection as well as their risk of developing breast cancer and what can be done to reduce that risk. And by raising awareness of breast cancer and supporting research, prevention and early detection so that we will move closer to eradicating this disease. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and we urge all Henry County residents to spread awareness of this disease, provide support for those affected by this illness and educate others on its prevention and early detection. This 19th day of October, Henry County Board of Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. You have the consent agenda. Have our county manager Sherri Matthews to come forward please.
Good evening Chair, members of the board and Chair Harrell, I do want to just make sure because individuals may be here this evening to announce that the following item has been postponed. It's a public hearing for RZ-21-22, it's Builders Professional Group LLC of Fayetteville, Georgia. They requested a rezoning from R2 to R3 for property located at 3539 Jonesboro Road in land lot 105 of the 6th District. The property consists of 30.118 plus or minus acres and the request is for a single-family residential subdivision. Again, this item has been postponed by the applicant and when the applicant is ready to proceed, we will repost the property and re-advertise.
So does anyone hear from that group? Thank you.
Consent agenda, under Community Development Block Grant, we have a resolution to extend the previous agreement and to accept additional carers funding from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Emergency Solutions Grant Program in the amount of $130,000. Under EMA E911 Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the replacement purchase of E911 Dispatch Console Furniture for the Emergency Communications Center from Zibix Systems Inc. in the amount of $316,465 to replace the 10-year-old console furniture because they are outdated, broken and beyond repair utilizing E911 fees. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a bid number 22-08 to Crown Service Contractors out of Flowery Branch, Georgia in the amount of $184,298 for demolition and remodeling services at 112 Zackin Parkway for the purpose of relocating the Henry County Fire Department Administration Group. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution approving a first amendment to the Georgia Micro Enterprise Network G-Men Services Agreement between G-Men and Henry County, Georgia for additional services to add ERAP 2 funding and increase compensation for administrative services in the amount of $837,994. We also have a resolution approving a first amendment to the Benevate Inc. SaaS Services Agreement between Benevate Inc. and Henry County GA for additional services to add ERAP 2 funding and increase compensation for hosted software licensing in the amount of $33,520. Under Fleet Services, we have a resolution approving the purchase of 50 Ford Pursuit Explorers from Wade Ford of Smyrna, Georgia in the amount of $2,448,936 for the Police Department through state contract utilizing SPOS 5 funds. And that would be SPOS Item SP5011. We also have a resolution approving the purchase of 5 Ford T250 Cargo Vans with HVAC and electric package in the amount of $195,213 through state contract from Wade Ford for Facility Maintenance Department utilizing Capital Improvement Plan Funds as approved by the Board and the CIP. Under Human Resources, we have a resolution to approve the Cigna Medicare Advantage Program as a part of the Henry County Retirement Medical Insurance Plan for 2022. We also have a resolution to adopt Amendment Number 4 to the Addendum and Adoption Agreement for ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employees in order to provide the E911 Operators, EMA Administrative Personnel and Crime Scene Investigators to be added to the Public Safety Retirement Investing Plan. Under the Sheriff's Office, we have a resolution approving the purchase of equipment to upgrade the current simulator in the Henry County Sheriff's Department in the amount of $91,953 from Bear Tra using approved grant funds from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Under SPOS, we have a resolution awarding bid number 22-17 to Lynn David Doing Business at CNC Fence Company in the amount of $66,918 for fencing around the new FBO at the Atlanta Speedway Airport utilizing SPOS 4 funds. And then under SPOS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Cost for South Ola Road Extension in the amount of $97,646. This ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? Commissioner Thomas.
Item A on the financial, we need an explanation in where these funds are coming from in reference to the Georgia Micro Enterprises Network. And Item B, we need an explanation as to where these funds are coming from. Again, for the ERAP program that was a federal funded dollars that was given for these expenses. So we need to know where those funds are coming from and why we're being asked to supplement this federal grant that was given to us. Under.
Can we let him do that?
Okay.
Do the financial services first.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Smith to come forward and present that item. Or to respond to that question, those questions, sorry.
Good evening Madam Chair, Commissioners, Henry County Community. In response to your question Commissioner Thomas, these funds are still treasury funds. It's, we were allocated for ERAP 2, 5.5 million. And so we're utilizing 800,000 to compensate the third-party provider for the services. 15%, we're allowed up to 15% for ERAP 2 for administrative services. In the previous ERAP 1, it was 10%. So we're upping that amount. For the second one, the same for Neighborly Software. The name of the company is Benevate Incorporated, Neighborly Software that we're utilizing. They had to upgrade the software in order to accommodate the ERAP 2 funding process. And that's also coming from the ERAP 2 funds that we received from the government.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Smith, at the last board meeting, we were considering whether or not this company will be granted the second opportunity to dismiss or disperse these funds. And that has not yet been determined, so while we allocating the funds, we have not determined that they will be the provider for the second set of fundings that we're distributing.
So that's the purpose behind this resolution is to grant a contract extending actually the contracts for both of these companies. Benevate as well as G-Men to provide those services for us.
This resolution would do both.
Yes ma'am.
Extend the contract to them and pay them the additional funds that's needed.
It will also allow us the opportunity for, from ERAP 1, for those applications that were still outstanding that we couldn't fund to begin funding those applications or at least addressing them.
Well, I'm for one was very concerned about the fact that we had over $7 million and $6 million going to our public and they were only able to touch 800 people. But that was one of my concerns. And thank you for your explanation, I do understand what this resolution is for now, thank you.
Okay, so as a point of clarification though, Commissioner, if I may, Chair, we touched more than 2,000 people. We spent more than $6.3 million in assisting those people and we did it approximately a year and a half before time. And so I believe both G-Men and Neighborly have been very successful in that, but I understand your concern Commissioner. But those are the more accurate numbers of who we helped, it wasn't 800, it was more than that.
Okay, well, I guess the last report was just from that time period that I was looking at and not the whole period.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, because I do remember the number being 800 or something that was presented at the last board member.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, so that was not a summary, thank you for that correction.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Thomas, did you have any other?
No, thank you.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor. For everything.
I still have a question on Fleet Services, letter A.
Okay, that's what I was asking, did you have any?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I thought you meant on that ERAP.
Okay, alright, and what was the discussion?
My question is, you have this on the SPOS 5 funds Sherri?
Yes ma'am.
For, excuse me, Ms. Matthews? For this purchase, please explain to us how it's on the SPOS 5 funds and not the CIP that we've been working on. And it was my understanding that SPOS 5 would be distributed by district and not have any other allocations directly. Did I miss something there? I know we did something different this year in the way we broke up those dollars between the counties and the cities and put some other things in between. So if you would just give us an explanation of what this is, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, and I think David's gonna speak again on that because he's been working on the financial piece.
So there were several method, funding mechanisms for our capital improvement plan. One of which was the SPOS 5, which in SPOS 5 it included a fleet replacement program. If you recall earlier in the year, we utilized parts of those funds to purchase vehicles. This is the second part of that fleet replacement program that was set aside. In SPOS 5.
So these are funds coming from SPOS, but they are part of the capital improvement program?
So SPOS is a part of all of our capital. So we have a capital improvement program that includes SPOS 5. It includes our certificates of participation. It also includes amounts that we transferred over from our general fund so that we had sufficient balance to pay off everything that we needed to do.
And I think we had a conversation at our last meeting about the fact that we needed to break up some of these purchases to other small businesses in the county. I'm assuming that Wade Ford, yes, is in Cobb County. We need to find a way to support the small businesses that are paying taxes back into this county. And we had that discussion last time. Is there no way you can break up these 50 vehicles to try and include some of Henry County taxpaying small businesses to be included in this process?
Commissioner, for this particular purpose, what we utilize would.
Before you answer that question, are there any small businesses in Henry County that can provide pursuit vehicles? Police pursuit vehicles?
There are no small businesses that are listed under the state contract and have been approved by the state purchasing department that can provide these vehicles.
So why do we use state contract?
We utilize state contract for purposes of expediency. The state put out a bid for, to provide pursuit vehicles. They accepted all of those bids and then evaluated those bids, same process that we follow in our purchasing department. Evaluated all of those bids and then arrived at a contractor and awarded that to Wade Ford. They were the winning bidder in that, in that case for the state. From our perspective, our policy allows us to not only piggyback on what the state does but also other cooperative purchases that exist. We utilize the state contract for expediency so we wouldn't have to put it out for bid, which typically takes about, I would say, six weeks to two months. This helps expedite that process for us.
And I know you explained that exceptionally well at the last meeting.
Thank you.
You really did, I understood the process. And I'm still sitting here with this board saying that we need to find a way to include these bid processes for our small businesses here in this county. And we are not mandated to use the state process. And it does look like we as a board are overlooking the fact that we have providers that are close to us because it's more expedient and easier to use a state process. And that's one of the things that really does concern me as we sit here and raise taxes and ask for more money and talk about the fact that we want to help build up Henry County economic factors and all that cute stuff we like to say. But we turn around and consistently do this.
So Commissioner Thomas, if I could chime in, because I want to make sure that when we're presenting information, we're presenting information to the public, so when you say that we're raising taxes, understand that the funds for all of our vehicle purchases are coming from two pots. It's either from our SPOS program or from the capital improvement, which is our COPs grant, or COPs loan that this board approved. And so that's where the funding is coming from. It's not additional taxes that we're passing on to the public. One of the things that I said to this board maybe a month and a half ago when this came up is that we are competing with every jurisdiction to try and get vehicles. And why it may seem like the easy way is to do it expeditiously by pulling off of the state contract. We have to move as quickly as possible because we aren't able to locate these vehicles. I remember there being some conversation about, you know, why, why are you all not looking local? If there are vehicles that are available on a local lot, we'll go after those vehicles. The challenge we have is that this is not a standard for an Explorer. We're looking for a pursuit vehicle and so we are competing with other jurisdictions to do just that, which is to move expeditiously to try to get these vehicles. I assure you, what we're bringing to you all is a result of the plans that you all have approved. We have a SPOS 5 program that called for a vehicle replacement plan, which included public safety vehicles. These vehicles are being purchased with those funds that we've collected. Now, if there are other businesses in the community that are local businesses and their car lots, we can get them registered as vendors through the county, not go off of the state contract, go two or three months to get it to the board and maybe pay a higher cost. We don't know, we don't know until we bid it out. At least on the state contract, we know what the cost is gonna be when we go out to get the vehicles. So it's not, and I, I know that you all are getting frustrated because we talk about this at every meeting when it comes to car purchases. But also understand, I have officers that's gotta have vehicles. And, and I hate to bring the chief up, but we're gonna get to a point that we're gonna have to be riding two officers in the vehicle because we don't have the vehicles. I think one of the things you all asked us to do was to make sure that we had officers on the street. Well, I can't put them on the street if I don't have vehicles to put them in. And so this is part of that plan that was approved when you all voted on the list of projects for our SPOS program and we're just carrying through with, with, with that plan.
Sir, what's the waiting time on the vehicles?
So I will tell you, go ahead.
So the waiting time used to be approximately three months. And so now the waiting time is six months to nine months with, once you approve these particular vehicles, as an example, we don't expect to have them on the road until about June of 2022.
And that's if we act today.
That's if we act today.
Go ahead Commissioner Holmes.
Driving Chargers, so why are we switching to Ford Explorers?
Great question, I'm gonna get Jody to come up to speak to that Commissioner Holmes, because that's a great question.
I mean, wouldn't, aren't, aren't Explorers more expensive than Chargers? I mean, we're looking at $2.4 million of Explorers.
So I don't believe in, you would think that it would be chief, but I'll let Jody speak to that.
I would like to hear from the chief of police instead of the fleet person, the chief, you know, he should be able to justify why, why we're moving to Explorers versus having Chargers on the road.
Well, I'm gonna get Jody to give an update because it's the reason why fleet is involved in that conversation in terms of the type of vehicle, the wear and tear on the vehicle, but the chief can certainly come forth and answer any questions that you may have.
He can't justify why the police department wants to move to Explorers.
I don't think it's a matter of the police department wanting to move to an Explorer. It's based on the type of vehicle, when the vehicles are being damaged, the wear and tear of the vehicle. And so I can definitely get the chief up to speak to that, but Jody deals with the fleet every day.
Ford Explorers? Yes ma'am, the, our, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. The Dodge Charger has been a very expensive vehicle to maintain. The Charger engine, we have probably had trouble every 40,000 miles. The warranty concerns through the Dodge dealerships have been very poor. I mean, they have not assisted in a lot of things. The Dodge Charger also, the ones that are at 100,000 miles have already had the top of the engine dealt with three times. We've had to put cams, heads, numerous engines in them. We've had to put cams, heads, numerous engines in them. The transmissions alone are $31,000 if they go out. For every hour a police car idles, it's equal to 25 miles, which if you times, do some math, that's about 31,000 miles a year on an engine. After the Charger's five years old, it's got 156,000 miles added to the runtime that you see on an odometer. So the Charger has cost us a tremendous amount. The front ends do not stay under it. We have spent $2,000 to fix a front end on a regular basis. The Ford Explorer has been, it's been very good. It has been very low cost. We've had hardly any trouble out of the Ford Explorer. And it's also got some more room in the back for gear. It's just easier to maintain. The parts are a lot easier to obtain.
Commissioner Clemens?
My concern is that I don't think that we have ensured an open and fair bidding process. It has not been a competitive bidding process. There's been no bids. Someone has just decided to select from the contracts from the state. If you guys were showing me that you tried to get Chargers or you tried to get Chevrolets, you tried to get something else, and this was the only option besides you just telling us this, then I would feel more comfortable. But I just don't feel that you have done a fair and competitive bidding process with all types of vehicles before you bring us a 2.4 million dollars in addition to the other millions that we've spent in the last 60 days. And so I just don't think that it's been a competitive bid process. And simply because David said it, it had not been. He just selected from the state contractor because they had it. Even if you have to go with them, at least bid it out and then bring us something saying, "We did bid it out, commissioners, and nobody came back." I would feel more comfortable with that than just saying, "We chose Fords." Now, you have Jody up here who has been with the county for 25 years or more in the fleet, making an expert decision. And I'm sure Chevrolet and Charger and Dodge would probably dispute everything that you said about whether the Charger's better, whether Ford is better. So I still have a concern with this being on the consent agenda. Now, are we speaking about this because we're gonna leave it on the consent agenda or are we gonna move it to discussion so that we can vote on it? Because that would be the proper protocol.
Commissioner Thomas asked for some discussion, and that's what we're doing.
Madam Chair, for your patience, first of all, because this is very important and people are following this discussion. I would definitely like to see this item moved to the regular agenda for a vote and not be placed on the consent agenda so that we can definitely make sure we vet it. And one other thing, Sherri, when we get it to the other agenda, if you wanna, we had considered leasing instead of purchasing. And what happened to that idea of leasing certain vehicles instead of purchasing because we thought we was losing too much money buying vehicles? Has that idea just gone away? Are we still considering it? What are we doing with that?
No, ma'am. We are still, and I'm gonna let David speak to that, but I also wanna remind you, we're talking about police vehicles. And so when you start talking about leasing that magnitude of a vehicle with the wear and tear, that would not be in our best interest when we talk about specifically the police vehicles. We are working through some processes. I know Dave and Jody have both been in conversation regarding leasing vehicles. I'll remind the board, we did lease some apparatus for the fire department. So where we see that it's feasible, we will bring a lease option. David?
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to a statement that Commissioner Clemens made about our purchasing process, which I believe to be, and it certainly is, an inaccurate statement. If I may. From the moment I arrived here in July 2018, our purchasing process has been nothing but fair, open, and transparent. We've done our best to involve our local vendors. We've done our best to involve minority vendors in that process. The state does a bidding process very similar to ours. We, for efficient and effective purposes, utilize the state's process for bidding. Now, if the question is, do we bid out sometimes ourselves? The response to that is yes. We don't always use cooperative purchasing agreements from agencies that have done the bid process, done an evaluation process, and selected vendors themselves. One such example of that is our fuel contract where we bid out. Another example of that is when we bid for vehicles that fall under, I would say, Allen Vigil Ford or vehicles that fall under, I forget his name, but he has a, um, shop here.
Emmanuel Jones.
Emmanuel Jones, yes. He's won a bid from us. So to make a statement that is inaccurate, I think, gives the public a false perception of what Henry County purchasing is doing and what Henry County purchasing is doing for its citizens. We work to achieve the most efficient and effective process at the lowest price for our citizens. And that is what we do. And I don't want the public to leave here thinking otherwise.
Well, David, in, in response to that, again, these dollars that we're talking about, 2.4 million dollars, did not come from the state. These 2.4 million dollars are the monies that I'm elected to oversee. These are Splotch dollars, and I would like to see a fair bidding process that goes beyond taking a cooperative agreement from the state. The state cooperative person can still bid in that process. Those same people that are on the state's level can still bid in that process. This is not about whether the county's department, because I trust the process in this county, okay? So this is not about that. I'm just saying that if we're gonna spend 2.4 million dollars of Splotch dollars from this community, we wanna make sure that we at least come with more than one selection from a cooperative process and say, "At least we did our part and we looked beyond just the state process." We put it out and we had a fair bidding process by opening it up to anyone that wanted to. And then bring us all of the information. This is not the state's funds. This is not the state's, 2.4 million dollars is a lot of money. And this is our responsibility to ask questions. I don't like the fact that we ask questions and you, that the county feels like, the staff feels like it's time to defend themselves. I'm not blaming our county. I'm saying the process needs to be more open and we need to open up a process when we're dealing with 2.4 million dollars. This board has done a lot on the consent agenda since January, okay? It has not been 2.4 million dollars. This board has done a lot on consent agenda, 500,000, 300,000. But this is 2.4 million dollars in Ford vehicles that we've never done before. We have a right to question that.
May I respond, Madam Chair?
And, and it's always a back and forth. That's not what it's about. As a commissioner who's elected, I have a right to ask those questions.
And I appreciate those questions. And the public has a right to hear you ask those questions, Commissioner. I'm not questioning that. I'm barely defending and merely defending that our process is fair. And our process is fair, it's open, it's transparent. I want to address the 2.4 million dollars. 2.4 million dollars is there because this county has done a very poor job of replacing its vehicles. We only recently, and you were here when we approved our capital improvement plan, maybe last year? So our vehicles are very old. That means this county's done a poor job. That means we have to replace numerous vehicles, not just one or two. If we were on a standard vehicle replacement plan, we would be, we would be replacing 10 to 20 each year. That's not where we are. And so we're in a position of catching up first before we can begin to even get ahead. And that's why the amount is so, so large. But I understand the purpose for removing this item from consent.
Yeah, it needs to be open and competitive. I'm not questioning fairness. Open and competitive.
It is open and competitive, Commissioner.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Let's don't get hung up on 2.4 million, 2.4 million dollars. All right? Let's look at $49,000 a vehicle. We just happen to get 50 of them. The inflation of vehicles, new vehicles, is up 15%. You cannot go to any car lot and buy a car less than sticker price. So inflation's gonna keep hitting these cars. We don't purchase the cars now. If you go through a process of trying to embed some other bids, we may get hit with another 15% increase. So I think our finance department, our Fleet Services are doing a great job of bringing this to us. You've gotta trust what they do because they do an excellent job bringing this information. I wouldn't want your job. So thank you, David, Jody, Sherri, for the job well done. And I support the $49,000 per vehicle. We just, and the problem, we need 50. Like, like David said, we have, doing a poor job in replacing. Today, we have to buy 50, and which will be delivered June of '22. So if you wanna put this off and, and try to go get other bids and be six months, now it's gonna be January of '23, and then the prices of the cars are gonna go up because the inflation's gonna keep going up. So I think y'all did an excellent job bringing this. Thank y'all.
Commissioner Holmes had asked for the chief to come forward to speak, so I'd like for Chief Amerman to please come forward.
Commissioners? Commissioner Holmes, you have a question?
Wanted to, wanted you to justify the reason why we're, while we need 50 for the Explorers and why we're moving from Chargers to the Explorer.
All right. Why we're moving from Chargers to Explorers? As Jody started to explain, we've had a lot of issues with the Chargers as far as brakes, engines, transmissions. And I constantly hear it from Jody that they're just falling apart and we're spending so much money fixing them. I'm sure Jody has the numbers how they are comparable, but price-wise, they're very comparable price-wise vehicles. Maintenance-wise, we've been having tremendous success with the Explorers as far as the upkeep on them. The bonus to the Explorers is there is a lot more room in them that, with all the extra gear the officers have to carry, it's a much more versatile and better vehicle for the officers to have out there on the road, for sure. But as far as the maintenance costs and all that, I mean, that's why we got a fleet manager. He's the expert. Ask me a cop question. If I got a car question, I ask the guy behind me. And I can see, just from my experience of being here so long, you know, the Crown Vic was the police vehicle because the, when it crashed, you could replace just the fender. The engine held up really good. I hated when Ford stopped making them. And we were forced to go to the Charger, mostly because that was the most affordable vehicle. There was the Impala and those from Chevy products, super, super expensive compared to the Charger. But now that Ford's come back around with another pursuit vehicle, so the Dodge isn't the only one in the running for affordability, the Ford has definitely been a better value for my officers out on the street. And it also makes the guy that has to fix my cars every day a lot happier and spending a lot less money, which is.
Is it just us that's having the issues with the Chargers? Because most cities and counties throughout the state of Georgia are driving the Chargers. So why are we having so many problems with it when everybody else is satisfied?
They're not. They're all going through the same transition we're going through right now.
Commissioner Holmes, were you finished? Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Chief, the reason we weren't using the Explorers in the past, and Jody, you may be an answer to this question. The Ford Explorer up until 2019 were front-wheel drives. Is that correct?
Uh, the Ford Explorer was a rear-wheel drive. These are all-wheel drive.
Right. But I'm thinking they had a, at one time, they had a front-wheel drive, then went back to a rear-wheel drive in 2019.
Yes, they, they've been through a couple transitions.
So that's the reason that, that's the reason the pursuit vehicles are now going to the Ford Explorer because they went from a front-wheel drive to a rear-wheel drive, correct?
Correct. And the Charger is only rear-wheel drive and in snow and bad.
Then you got an all-wheel drive.
Yeah, and we got all-wheel drive on the, uh, thing. Also, the, like I said, all agencies, as Mr. Holmes referred to, when we had a funeral one time, which is, you know, awful, but we had Chargers from all agencies. Every one of them that rode by were ticking and knocking. So, I mean, you could hear the engine in every Charger that's out there ticking and knocking. So you up and stand beside one of them that you see somewhere that's a police model and they're ticking.
Thank you.
Chief Amerman, how essential are the 50 cars to you being able, and your officers being able to do their job?
Very, very essential. We're to the point, we're almost to the point we're gonna have to start doubling up if we don't, if we don't get cars. And of course, we don't wanna do that. We wanna have more officers being, responding more crimes as, as we can. So we very much, and we're still replacing stuff. You know, you've all approved for me to hire more. And I've been hiring and hiring and hiring. We didn't even talked about buying cars for them yet. This is still just trying to keep our fleet running. We, we have to have these cars. And my big concern is, everybody's seen the news. Everybody knows what's going on with the chips and how hard it is to find, to find vehicles. This state contract we're using, that they used to buy these, is the ones we bought cars for with last time. This is still old. I'm afraid if we kick this can down the road some more, they're gonna rebid and cars are gonna go up in price again. And if we rebid all the items, like I've seen the board do, we've done once before, every line item, it took like 18 months, almost two years for me to get a car. Well, if we can order a car that's ready to hit the street, that you just said, they can do that in six to nine months. If you delay that, that's gonna be years down the road, and that's gonna put Henry County in a bad spot for us to be able to get out here and do what we need to do.
So in other words, to be able to do the job to protect the citizens of this county?
Absolutely.
And he need, and you need, yes, you need all 50, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
You mentioned Crown Vics. We still have Crown Vics on the road.
I'm embarrassed to say yes.
Yes, sir. We do. And they've been repainted, they've been re-motored, been retransmissioned, they've been redone for. And what's the year models of the Crown Vics?
Some of them are as old as 1999.
1999.
Yes.
And the reason, I can tell you how you can identify those, they're silver. And if they have the new decals on them, that means they've been repainted and redecap. And some of those Crown Vics are driven by your reserve units, which are still with their original paint job, with their original decals. And you can tell that because they peeling off.
Yes, sir.
Yes. And so y'all, you've been putting these things together for years. I know the fleet has done an excellent job by keeping the motors in them, the transmissions in them, and the front end rebuilt. And so it's time to retire 1999. And how many of those do you have on the road?
34.
34. It's time to retire those 1999 that's been re-motored three times, retransmissioned three times. And let's go ahead and get 50 pursuit vehicles and get them on order where these guys can have something decent and safer, safer. Now, when we talk about vehicles, we talking about upgrading the safety features. And these 1999, they, they do not have the safety features in the brand new. Because all you had in a, them cars back then were just the driver's side airbag. Now they have airbags all the way around. They got A-post, B-post drive. So it's important to get them cars off the road, let's get these things ordered today to give your officers something decent and safer to drive.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Rob, I just want to state that this discussion was something that was very much needed. To put the 2.4 million dollars on there and the public not understand all the particulars that has been brought forth before us about the Crown Vics, the age of them and the maintenance, it's important to know that and not just have it in a condensed form like all you all did was. So I appreciate the explanation. I appreciate the going back and forth. I do wanna challenge the purchasing department and our county manager to purposely look for opportunities, purposely look for opportunities that will involve our small businesses in Henry County, because that's very, very important. We really do need to do that.
Is there any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. RZ twenty-one dash ten Eagles Landing ILAL Investors LLC of Roanoke, Virginia, request a rezoning from C-two General Commercial to O-I Office Institutional for property located west of Patrick Henry Parkway and east of Interstate seventy-five in Land Lot Forty-six of the Sixth District. The property consists of seven-point-nine-seven-five-plus acres, and the request is for an assisted living facility in District Four.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located on Patrick Henry Parkway. The property is currently zoned C-two General Commercial, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning from C-two to O-N-I Office Institutional for the purpose of an assisted living facility. The subject property is highlighted in green and is east of I-seventy-five and west of Patrick Henry Parkway. As you can see, the property is zoned C-two with a collection of O-N-I properties across the street from it. And the property has a future land use designation of mixed use, which does support the O-N-I zoning district. The site plan submitted in the application is shown on the slide. It consists of one four-story building with one-hundred-and-ninety units and meets all of the development standards for the O-N-I zoning district. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from C-two to O-N-I for the purpose of senior, of a senior living community, which includes independent living, assisted living, and memory care. The principal use will be assisted living. The property is currently vacant, and the parcel is not within the highway corridor overlay district. On May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board approved the applicant's variance request regarding a reduction of parking requirements from one-hundred-and-ninety spaces to one-hundred-and-sixty spaces as follows. Henry County Planning and Zoning Staff is hereby granted authority to administratively waive up to thirty parking spaces and also to require various design elements with regard to the reduced parking. At the same meeting, the Zoning Advisory Board recommended approval of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from C-two General Commercial to O-N-I Office Institutional with staff conditions as listed. One, architecture should be consistent with the elevations presented, meeting the approval of Henry County Planning and Zoning. Two, signage shall not exceed eight feet in height and should be monument-based. Three, selective cutting of trees along the right-of-way of I-seventy-five shall be permitted according to DOT regulation and for proper siding of the development. Denuding the right-of-way of trees shall be prohibited. And four, developers will install a five-foot sidewalk outside of the planned right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request with the same conditions previously read into the record. Thank you. I'll be happy to take any questions.
This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a collective total of ten minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the request will likewise have ten minutes collectively. Anyone that's wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Commissioner Thomas. My name is Cameron Swengel. I'm a Development Manager with Smith Paquette. I also represent the applicant, Eagles Landing ILAL Investors LLC. Also with us this evening is a number of members from our project team, including Wyn Bishop, Senior Vice President Development and Construction with Smith Paquette, Margaret Cabell, Chief Sales and Marketing Officer with Harmony Senior Services, the operator, Ron Crump, Partner with Continental Group, the Civil Engineer, and Ken Hartel, Project Manager with Continental Group, the Civil Engineer. Our project team has had the privilege of meeting with Commissioner Thomas, and we respect her dedication and commitment to responsible growth within the community. I'd like to take a minute to introduce you to Smith Paquette and Harmony Senior Services, providing some background on our reputation. We are a family-owned senior living development company with offices in Roanoke, Virginia, and Charleston, South Carolina, founded in nineteen eighty-two with almost forty years of experience, considered one of the most prominent senior living developers in the United States. We have developed or acquired over a hundred-and-fifty senior living and long-term care communities. We currently have fourteen communities in development and fifteen communities in construction with over one-point-one billion dollars in total project costs. Our communities offer a continuum of care, including independent living, assisted living, and memory care. And our communities are approximately one-hundred-and-ninety units, four stories, and two-hundred-thousand square feet. Harmony Senior Services is our sister company and currently operates twenty-eight communities east of the Mississippi. They have an excellent reputation in senior living care with twenty-four-seven nursing staff and community engagement with activity staff. Communities provide approximately one-hundred jobs through three shifts in your community. Each community is an approximately forty-five-million-dollar investment and significant addition to the tax base in your community. Senior living residents do not have school-aged children and do not burden the school system. Most senior residents do not drive, and communities do not significantly impact traffic. Communities offer scheduled trips and transportation via a shuttle to senior residents, including grocery stores, doctor's offices, shopping, and entertainment venues. When looking at a market, Smith Paquette's analysts identified Henry, or identified Henry County and more specifically, the areas surrounding Eagles Landing as a market demonstrating a need for senior living. Their analysis was based on key metrics, including population of age and income-qualified individuals, and penetration rates of existing competition. Their analysis accounts for existing and new competition and assesses the additional demand in your community. Patrick Henry Parkway is favorable for senior living with proximity to Piedmont Henry Hospital, retail and restaurants, and access to I-seventy-five. As Kamau shared, you can see the site between I-seventy-five and Patrick Henry Parkway, and also between Eagles Landing Parkway and Jodeco Road. In summary, we are requesting a rezoning from C-two General Commercial to O-N-I Office Institutional. The future land use is MU, mixed use. The proposed community will be approximately four stories and two-hundred-thousand square feet. As previously mentioned, it will offer a continuum of care, including approximately a hundred-and-ninety units, one-hundred independent living, sixty assisted living, and thirty memory care units. Approximately sixty assisted living units and thirty memory care units will be licensed with the state of Georgia. The independent living units will not be licensed. The community will offer amenities, including a central dining room for each level of care, pub, bistro, library, theater, billiards, fitness center, physical therapy, and outdoor patios. The site plan and elevations that will be shown to you meet all setback and height requirements, and our due diligence, our due diligence shows H-dot right-of-way acquisition, grading easement, and potential wetlands buffers. The acquisition has already been made for the right-of-way, and our site plan does fall outside of that right-of-way as well with the sidewalk that Kamau mentioned. Shown is the preliminary elevation of the community. We like to make each of our communities unique. The building or facade materials will be brick, hardy board, or hardy plank and shingle to reduce the scale of the community. We do our best to create depth through protrusions, a variety of indoor or enclosed balconies and outdoor open balconies as well. And we offer a porticoche or grand entrance at the front of the building, signifying where to enter. I'm going to take a moment and turn it over to Margaret Cabell, Chief Sales and Marketing Officer with Harmony Senior Services.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Margaret Cabell, Chief Sales and Marketing Officer for Harmony, the operator that's a partner with Smith Paquette. I've had the opportunity to speak with Commissioner Thomas about this project. We have an open and operating community in Savannah, Georgia, which I was able to do a recorded virtual tour for Commissioner Thomas last week to show her a little bit more about our communities. Couple of questions came up that I thought I would share with all of you. Since we are a senior living community, there was a request for information about our emergency preparedness and emergency response. Harmony has a full emergency response and preparedness manual that includes a response and policy and procedure for fire, flood, severe storms, tornadoes, hurricanes, bomb threats, power failure, or utility outages, missing residence or elopement drills, a hazardous spill, a pandemic episode, and even acts of terrorists. Those policies and procedures are meeting the requirements of our licensing agencies and for each county that we operate and are licensed for AL and memory care. There were some additional questions that came up after that visit, specifically about emergency lighting. All of our communities are equipped with a generator, which provides power during outages. It provides significant power to even power our elevators, our kitchens, our outlets in each of our apartments. Our smoke alarms do have a carbon gas sensor. They are tied to our fire alarm, so it detects carbon gas and alarm sounds to notify the fire department. We also have proactively put in radon detection systems for our communities. The question was brought up during a short-term evacuation. How will we partner with local communities and partners here in Henry County? During the development of our disaster preparedness plan, we will identify partners locally that will assist us during short-term evacuations and be long-term partners during our general operation. That can include, but may not be limited to, the pharmacy, transportation, obviously, utility services, medical supplies, and medical transportation. The other question, and I hear the interest from the board, is what local small businesses will Harmony be a partner with and help create more opportunities for? And thinking through what our communities generally partner with, we have many local small businesses that we partner with for landscaping. We have hairdressers, hair services, barber services come into our communities that rent our space and help service our residents. We employ a lot of local movers, of course, to help our residents move in or out of a community. We also have medical supply services like podiatrists, ophthalmologists, and other kind of clinical services that come into our community. And of course, our residents will enjoy your local restaurants, your cultural opportunities, and shopping opportunities. So, those were the points that were brought up that I wanted to address. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Hartel. I am the civil design engineer for this project. So, I just wanted to give you a quick rundown of our site plan. It's slightly updated from the one in the zoning report from Kamau. You can see that we have two full-access drives towards this development. The building is centrally located, and we are proposing parking to be concentrated towards the front of the site to help avoid disturbances for our residents who might be using any outdoor amenities to the rear. And the last item that, of note, that I wanted to mention was our proposal to install a ring road around the site. This is not necessarily a code requirement, but after discussions with planning and zoning and fire, we thought that it would be a, a great addition to help make sure that fire and emergency personnel could access any area of the site as needed. And this last slide here is just a couple of clarifications. One was just related to the breakdown of the different assisted living uses. And the second one was more of an acknowledgement that we recognize Henry County DOT will be widening Patrick Henry sometime in the future. That's all we have. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Does the board have any questions or comments?
Um, thank you, Herrill. I have asked for, and I'm not sure if he's here, our police, not our police, our fire chief or representative, if they had any concerns, they're welcome to express those at this meeting. Do we have any concerns from our fire department at all?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. Currently, at this time, I have brought with us Assistant Chief Michael Black. He's the Fire Marshal for the Henry County Fire Department. At this time, in the phase that this development is in, right now, we don't have any comments, questions, or concerns. As I talked to Commissioner Thomas earlier this week, one of the things that the fire department has done, as recently as last year, was updated the, the codes and ordinances in April of two thousand and twenty. And by bringing those codes and ordinances up to date, took care of a lot of the concerns that we had for facilities like this. But at this state of the, of the development, we don't have any comments or concerns. And I'll turn it over to Chief Black as well.
Good afternoon, Board. Yeah, Chief Burnett, that's absolutely correct. Our job really begins when the site plan is officially submitted, and then we go to work. And from that point forward, then we'll be applying the current state codes as well as our amended fire protection codes, which went into effect of unanimous decision by the board as April of two thousand and twenty of last year, which are pretty all-inclusive, which include significant changes to our fire alarm and sprinkler ordinances, as well as our fire lane access to our developments in this caliber here. So, we look forward to seeing those site plans.
Thank you. I really asked them, Chair Herrill and Board, to look into this unit because it's a hundred-and-ninety units. I wanted to make sure that we didn't overlook anything when it comes to taking care of seniors. And I, not being as experienced in this type of development, wanted to make sure if there was additional stipulations that we needed to put in place, that we will have that opportunity to do that while they're building it. And so, they have come back to me after looking at the plans from planning and zoning and stated that they are very comfortable with the emergency exit plans, with the process they've given us. This group of all was also sent in writing their procedures for protecting their clients, which really is something that I asked for additionally as well. So, thank you all so much for reviewing those plans on behalf of the county.
Thank you.
And I'll make my comments. If anybody does have questions, I'll make my comments last, Madam Chair.
Does any other, other board members have any questions? If not, you may proceed, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners certainly would like to receive your support on having this development come to Henry County. It is a forty-five-plus-million-dollar development that will come and add to the tax base here in the county. We have had a couple of meetings already vetting this company, the type of company they are, the quality that they bring here. We've made that discussion. We've seen their work through planning and zoning. We have also had them to deliver to us a virtual tour of their facilities, and I didn't want the prettiest one or the newest one. I said, find the facility. I want to see how your facilities hold up. They've done that, and I'm very, very pleased that they took the time to do that. I have sent them questionings on everything from the fire extinguishers to gases and emergency plans and lighting, generators by floor. They answered all of those questions to make sure they're doing everything that's necessary to take care of our senior population. Too often, we can go into these type of facilities and they're not very well cared for. One of the things I did ask was if they were a facility that maintained their facilities or do they build and sell and get out of the business? Based upon the history, they maintain their facilities, which is a very good thing because that means they're maintaining their standards throughout the country wherever they're building. So, that was very, very impressive to me as well. The hundred-plus jobs that they're bringing to the community is very valuable to us. I'm happy that we are meeting and, in some case, exceeding what the Fire Marshal is asking us to do in the building of this space. The green space that we're adding to this, planning and zoning has allowed them to not have to have an additional thirty spaces there. We've asked them to turn those additional thirty spaces into green space for the residents to use that space for their good. Because, you know, our senior citizens love to go out into garden areas. And based upon what we've seen in their other bills, they spend a lot of time developing the garden areas for the senior citizens. Definitely want them to look at the detention ponds. I don't know if there was one or two on site. How many, Civil Engineer, will there be for detention ponds?
We're probably going to need two detention ponds on site, I guess. We're probably going to need two detention ponds on site, I guess.
Two detention ponds. We want you to make sure those detention ponds are environmentally friendly, that they add to the aesthetics of the area. I do not want just a mud hole with those little green things in it, you know?
Definitely. We'll make sure we design it per the latest Georgia Blue Book standards. It'll be very nice, I'm sure.
Thank you. Make sure it's something that people will look at. Put a water fountain up if you want to, make it where fishes can grow in them, or something that's something that's going to add to the environment and add to that so that the residents can enjoy that. With all the pluses for this development, Madam Chair, I would like to put forth a proposal to have this planning and zoning request approved by this board.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, okay. You've done a very thorough job, Commissioner Thomas. So we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cannon seconds the motion. If there's no further discussion, can I get a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public hearing. RZ 2103, Blue River Development LLC of Cummins, Georgia, requests a rezoning from R A residential to R2 sewer, single-family residence for property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Highway 20 East and Airline in Lot 75 of the 7th District. The property consists of 93.69-plus acres, and the request is for a single-family residential subdivision, District 3.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This item before you is, as you said, located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Highway 20 and Airline Road. This area is outlined in green on the overhead, but also in your exhibits. The future land use map calls for a low-density residential, which allows up to two dwelling units per acre. And this subject property is proposed to have less than that at 1.8. The subject property is intended to be a conservation subdivision, and as such, it will be required to have a minimum of 40% open space. It will allow for the lots to be smaller than what's typical for the zoning district, but the conditions that we're looking at greatly increase the area of these lots. So we're not looking at the minimum. We're looking at something that's larger and wider than the minimum. So this is not a minimum-type subdivision. This request was before, the board before, and it was tabled so that we could take another look at it. And the applicant has done that. And so two different things that were addressed. The access to the property, also adding additional green space between the back of these lots. And that has been done as well. So again, staff has evaluated the applicant's request. The zoning advisory board also recommended approval of the applicant's request with 21 conditions. And Madam Chair, we'd be pleased to answer questions.
We're gonna hold the questions because we're gonna move forward first with the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a collective toll of 10 minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the request will likewise have 10 minutes collectively. So those that want to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing Blue River Development. Stacy did an excellent job communicating kind of how we got here. I know you guys have seen this project several times. I did want to kind of reiterate some of the key features to this revised plan that we feel like has really been an improvement, and I'm thankful for the input that I've received from your board and from planning and zoning, because I do believe that the result is a better, superior product. But the access to Airline Road, clearly that is going to, we believe, eliminate some traffic concerns to Highway 20. We have verified site distance works in that location. Also provides for a really nice visual corridor as you come in off of Airline Road. The lots that are shaded slightly a different color of the yellow at the very north end of the property, those are the lots that we have agreed to restrict those to slab-on-grade single-story construction based on some concerns that we understood were presented by some residents along Mountain Laurel Drive. In addition, the open space that threads through the project, we've made every effort to try to get as many of the lots as possible to be able to back up to that open space area rather than the previous plan, which, if you remember, had everything kind of compressed up to the north side of all the lots, and then all of the open space was on the south side adjacent to the floodplain. So again, we think that's a superior product. It does allow for some passive recreation opportunities down in the floodplain area, which is only suitable for that, but it is a great opportunity for that. There's a beautiful creek at the bottom of that floodplain area that's certainly going to be accessible through trails. And then those trails will extend through the project. We've also relocated the amenity center, which was at the southern entrance when it was on Highway 20, and we've pulled it into the center of the project in one of those open space pockets. So again, we're excited about the opportunity to present this plan tonight, certainly hope that you're in support of it. We've worked with Commissioner Cannon, and I know he's been very involved with the residents in the area, and as has Mr. Risher. In several meetings, we've tried to accommodate those concerns as best we can. We feel like this is going to be an excellent addition to the residential stock in Henry County. These houses will be starting in the 400 range and speaking with the builder, based on the way material costs are increasing and the demands are increasing, that that number may be even higher as these houses come on the market. Probably, from this point, if this board approves our project tonight, we'll be, you know, under construction with the development part of the project in the next six months. And another six months after that, hopefully, the project would be ready for at least the first phase of vertical construction. So you're probably looking at, you know, about two years, 18 months to two years, before these houses come on the market. So it's highly likely that those houses, again, could increase in price by then. We believe we're compatible with the surrounding areas, even with the conservation subdivision based on the conditions that have been proposed with regards to lot width and the average lot size and the minimum lot sizes, as well as the 40% of its open space. We believe we're very compatible with the Hickory Hills project, with all of the surrounding communities, consistent with the future land use map, actually, as Stacy mentioned, under the maximum allowable density that's authorized under the low-density residential district. And with that, I will reserve my time to answer questions after the, at the end of the public hearing. Thank you again for your time, and I respectfully request your approval of this updated revised plan and zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, could you do one favor for me before we call up for opposition? Could you put the conditions on the screen?
Yes, ma'am. So there are 21 conditions that were recommended by the zoning advisory board, and they will not all fit on one screen, but we can certainly go through them.
Okay, so can we read them into the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. So these are the conditions as was recommended by the zoning advisory board. Number one, a traffic impact study will be required. All of the indicated improvements shall be the responsibility of the developer or owner. The owner or developer shall coordinate with the county DOT and GDOT regarding all access to the development. Entrances shall be located such that the minimum intersection site distance and minimum spacing requirements are met for the road's posted speed limit. And shall have a deceleration lane and acceleration taper designed and constructed to GDOT and county DOT standards. Each home shall have a minimum two-car garage. Garages shall be side entry where feasible. All disturbed areas shall be sotted except where landscaping is present or installed. Number five, all homes shall include a covered front porch or stoop. Number six, the existing cemetery on the subject property shall be protected as per ULDC requirements in accordance with correspondence referenced by zoning advisory board member Mr. Risher. Number seven, the minimum heated square footage of a single-story home shall be 2,500 square feet. The minimum heated square footage of a multi-story home shall be 2,800 square feet. Home shall consist of all sides masonry, brickstone, or stucco. If developed as an R2S subdivision, the total number of dwelling units should be limited to 113. Number 10, if developed as a conservation subdivision, the minimum lot size shall be 15,000 square feet. The average lot size shall be a minimum of 18,000 square feet. These requirements shall govern unless otherwise conditioned. Number 11, if developed as a conservation subdivision, the minimum lot width shall be 100 feet. Number 12, the owner or developer shall install a privacy fence at least six feet in height along the northern property line. The fence should be maintained by the HOA. Number 13, a decorative monument entrance shall be required. Number 14, if developed as a conservation subdivision, any lots within 125 feet of the northern boundary of the development along the Mount Laurel subdivision may have a minimum lot size of 12,500 square feet, provided that there is a minimum 100-foot buffer all along the northern boundary of the development. This buffer shall include evergreen trees, meeting the requirements of the ULDC, Chapter 5, but shall otherwise be undisturbed. Number 15, an HOA shall be required. Number 16, minimum 10-foot wide sidewalks shall be required in accordance with the highway corridor overlay district and/or any other applicable ULDC code sections. Number 17, streetlights shall be required in accordance with the highway corridor overlay district and/or any other applicable ULDC code section. Number 18, all homes shall have a minimum front yard setback of 45 feet from the right-of-way line. Number 19, all homes on lots within 125 feet of the northern property line shall be limited to one story. Number 20, all stormwater management facilities shall be on their own lot and secured by a five-foot-high fence. And number 21, each permitted home in the development shall be compatible with existing homes, as determined by the planning and zoning department. Planning and zoning department is authorized to require the heated square footage to be increased and/or the architectural style to be modified in instances where incompatibility is determined. And these are our conditions, Madam Chair.
I'd like for the applicant to come back up because I do have some questions. Could you go back to the point on the slide where it talked about the side entrance garages as feasible? How many houses are going to be in this subdivision?
There's 113.
113. And so how many do you see that will have side garages?
Well, technically, with a 100-foot-wide lot, they could all accommodate a side-entry garage if the grading permits. So usually 90 feet is about the breakpoint where much less than 90 feet wide, they really have to be a front-entry garage, but once you hit 100 feet, it does offer the ability to have that side entry. The only thing that would restrict it would be, you know, like I said, topographic conditions or topographic issues that would just, you know, have a very costly retaining wall or something to force the ability to do a side entry. And I've spoken with the builder, and he is prepared to do side entry, but he just said, inevitably, in our, you know, 30 or 40 years of doing this, there's just one lot that just has a problem, and I hate to come back and bother the board to have a, because it's not a variable item. You can't get a variance from it. It's going to have to be a modification to conditions. We'd have to be back in front of the board. So that's why we were comfortable with the fees, as we're feasible, but we'd also be willing to consider another condition that just gives them a little bit of flexibility just in the event they have those couple of rare occurrences.
If I might comment regarding that, as added to the conditions, we would require that there not be more than 10% of the total homes with a front entrance.
That would be fine. Yes, sir.
So Stacy, can we make sure that we add that?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to add that to condition number three.
Okay. The other condition that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas.
As Commissioner Cannon, would he put a percentage on the HOA management turnover time, so at 75% capacity, to have the HOA management turn over to the community? We're getting a lot of these builders holding the HOA community, I hate to say hostage, and going to court two and three years down the road and not allowing them to access their budgets or anything because there was no percentage, just the when they had to turn it over. So I wanted to know if you would mind adding a percentage of time when it must be turned over to the community?
90%. Steve, let me ask in regards to this developer, at what point do they typically turn that HOA over?
I would say that would probably be about the time when that would occur.
75%?
75%. I would think that would be a fair timeframe when that would happen. Yes, sir.
I'm in agreement to add that. Thank you for that recommendation.
And one other thing, if I could, and there again, these are things that I have learned along the way. Would you mind putting a stipulation there about the percentage of rentals or lease purchases that can be in your community? We have an invasion now where they're getting around the word rental and saying, "No, that's a lease purchase," and taking over communities under that header. They'll probably think of another one after we get finished with this one. And have those rentals or lease purchases must be registered with the HOA in place.
Commissioner, I have noted to add to the conditions this evening, no more than 5% of the homes may be rented or leased at any one time.
Lease purchase now. Lease purchase. So Stacy?
Stacy, are you getting that? I'm sorry.
Yes, I am. And we're going to make that condition 22.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And then can you go to the slide that talks about brickstone and stucco?
Yes.
So if I may, Chair, in regards to that condition, my preference is that it should read, "Home shall consist of all sides masonry, brickstone, or stucco. Exterior products, including cement fiber board, may be used for accents, but will be limited to 20% of the exteriors of each side."
You got that, Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to make that change to condition number eight.
Okay. And I have one other, please. Condition 14, there's been a lot of discussion and concern regarding that buffer on the north end of the property for Mountain Laurel. Citizens there have requested that the evergreens that are planted as part of that barrier, we want to leave as much of the natural that's there, but then in the barrier, we would like for those evergreens to be a minimum of six feet when they're installed, please.
There was, if I may, too, on that, there was discussion on that buffer, the appearance of that buffer. I think as the condition is currently worded, the fence is to be placed along the northern property line, which would be on the roadside of the buffer. And we were, from an aesthetic standpoint, again, in an attempt to preserve the existing vegetation, maybe moving that fence to the backside of the buffer would hopefully mitigate, you know, looking like a big fence just as you're driving down the road, and it would be more looking like what it is right now, so.
Appreciate you remembering that because we did discuss that.
Yes, sir.
And we also have noted that that fence will be the responsibility And we also have noted that that fence will be the responsibility of the HOA to maintain.
Yes, sir.
I'm in agreement with all of that.
Anything else, Commissioner Cannon?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the development, please come forward, please. And please state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Sarita Dyer of 1025 Fan Leaf Drive, McDonough, Georgia, and I reside in District Three. Tonight, I'm speaking here on behalf of the Hickory Hills subdivisions as a Board of Director. Our homes' square foot average range from 7,000 to 3,500 square feet. As a Board of Director for Hickory Hills, our overall projective, our overall objective is to protect our property value. Currently, District Three has a plethora of new homes, developments ongoing, all simultaneously within a three-to-five mile radius. Meanwhile, I find the ratio of home development to the quality of life establishment is unequivocally unjust in District Three. Many hear the word conservation and think good practices by the developer when overall its impact is to the surrounding neighborhoods equates to more traffic, more pollution, and cookie-cutter houses. The Board of Directors acts the following. Open space considerations, like considering running, I mean, walking trail, biking trails, we have not heard that here tonight. We also ask that, not now, but in the future and even going forward, that the commissioners establish or facilitate a developer slash community, surrounding community forum so we can discuss these things before we get here and the vote, and then we have to come here and try to figure out what's going on. That, that way, we can communicate. The people who are pure to that area can have a say and have a input to assist with the projects as they go forward. Pretty much, that's all I have. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak in opposition? Anyone else would like to speak in opposition?
Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve based on the conditions that have been read this after, this evening, please.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve based on the conditions read in the record. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clemens. No further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Comp AM 2102, CHI acquisitions, LP of Atlanta, Georgia, request an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located west of North Bridges Road and east of Interstate 75 in landlots 113 and 114 of the sixth district. The property consists of 53.85 acres, and the request is to amend the future land use map designation from mixed use to industrial, District Three. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This subject property is located right at exit 221 on the east side of I-75 Jonesboro Road. This is outlined in green on your overhead and also in your exhibits. This is a 53-acre tract that had been previously zoned as part of a 122-acre tract that went through a DRI process and completed all those requirements and received a notice of decision together with the attachment A of that notice of decision, which are road improvements that the county would be held to if the county doesn't hold our applicants to those standards. This property is on C3, which was for the Henry Promenade Development, which was, it came in, in the latter part of the 20 teens, 16, 17 in that region. Our future land use map calls for a mixed use in the area around exit 221. The C3 doesn't exactly fit in with the future land use map, but it's, it's grandfathered for a, a destination shopping district. The issue is that since Henry Promenade was developed, many of those acres have been zoned back to an RA zoning, and so it's, it's not available for development altogether as the shopping center that was originally planned. The applicant's request is for a big box warehouse and distribution center at over 400,000 square feet. Well, that requires a rezoning from C3 to M1, and that is certainly not supported by the future land use map. So this, at our first hearing, we're talking about the future land use map, and should it be changed from mixed use to industrial? So, I mean, you've got all that area that's consistently around exit 221, and we're gonna take this 50-something acre piece and change it to something that's industrial. In staff's estimation, that's out of character with the area. So we've evaluated the applicant's request, and we do recommend denial of the applicant's request. It should stay mixed use. And the zoning advisory board held a hearing as well, and they agreed and recommended denial of this request.
Thank you. Okay, again, this is a public hearing. Persons wish to speak in favor of the requests, including the applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the requests will likewise have 10 minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Andy Welch with law firm Smith Welch, Webb and White. Mr. Doug Dillard is here with me, with Dillard and Sellers. We jointly represent the applicant on my behalf and Mr. Dillard on behalf of the property owners. Because of decisions by the Georgia Supreme Court, we have to put on an evidentiary show for you with a very minimal amount of time to do so. So we have four witnesses that we'll be presenting to you tonight, and what we'll do is we'll go through them. You'll only be able to hear two of them probably in the first segment of this, in the land use part of this. We'd ask that you consider the testimony of all four witnesses when you make your zoning decision. Because of the time constraints of 10 minutes, they'll each have to go through the 10-minute portion of the land use presentation, followed by two more witnesses for the zoning portion of this, so that we can create the record that the Supreme Court is seemingly required that we do for a zoning appeal. With that, I have four witnesses here. They're all here tonight, and if you'll indulge me, I'm just gonna have them sworn in with our court reporter for the records so that they are duly sworn and give sworn testimony. Before that, I'll let Mr. Dillard speak.
All right, just very briefly, we represent the owners of the property, and they are Z&amp;Z Construction Company, the estate of Zach B. Hinton, the McGarrettie Commercial Properties, M. Lindsay McGarrettie as trustee under the Harold Lamar McGarrettie Irrevocable Trust, and Jimmy S. Raven Jr. These, these owners join in the applicant request to change the comp plan as set forth in AM 21-02 and the rezoning application contained in rezoning 21-08. We have filed constitutional challenges and make an appearance on behalf of these five property owners who are collectively own 100% of the property, and we support the application both for the rezone and the comp plan amendment. Thank you, sir.
You will hear from Dr. Lynn Patterson and Ms. Jean Esam. Dr. Patterson has 25 years of experience in planning, and Dr., and Jean Esam is also a registered Georgia real estate appraiser for over almost 40 years of experience. With these two, I'll go ahead and have them sworn in. If you raise your right hand, you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Let the minutes reflect that both of them said I do. With that, Ms. Patterson, if you'll go ahead. Dr. Patterson's.
Good evening, Commissioners. Whoops, it's a little loud. My name is Dr. Lynn Patterson. I'm an economic development and municipal planner with Three Points Planning, and this testimony that I'm about to give is consistent with an affidavit and report. I'm unable, given the time constraint, to present the full details from the affidavit and report. As Andy mentioned, I have 25 years of experience in the planning and economic development field, which is detailed in my CV and is also attached as Exhibit A to my affidavit, which is filed with Henry County. I have composed a report of my findings and analysis for the subject property's reversion, rezoning request, and comprehensive plan amendment, and a true and accurate copy has also been presented as Exhibit B to my affidavit. My report is summarized as follows. The denial of the reversion request with C3 with conditions to M1 and the corresponding future land use map amendment from mixed use to industrial lacks merit for the following reasons. First, the county has a reversion process included in the code for such instances where a rezoning has been requested and the proposed project fails to be developed. This occurred in 2016. Section 12 dot 00 dot 03 expression of approvals. This reversion has been granted to four other property owners but is not being applied in this instance. Second, the 2016 rezoning initiated by Henry Promenade from M1 to C3 with conditions is no longer viable because the conditions required can no longer be met, and the assemblage of parcels no longer share the same C3 zoning. Next, the comprehensive plan and its future land use maps have changed frequently over the years, 15 years, indicating an evolution but also an inconsistency of market realities, vision, and incompatibility with underlying zoning when you look at the history. When we're considering the impact and desired outcome, the intent of mixed use classification, we try to think about what the impacts on the surrounding properties and the intent of that district is. Originally, the Henry Promenade project had projected over 21,000 trips, total trips per day. This proposed logistic development, logistics development would generate 756 total trips per day, which the reversion would permit a use resulting in a 97% reduction in total trips per day from what had been projected with Henry Promenade. Second, we look at with mixed use as an opportunity to create jobs, activity centers, and integrate and interconnecting with good-paying jobs to support the commercial development. The data presented by the Bureau of Labor Statistics show that hourly, average hourly earnings for employees in warehouse and storage occupations is approximately $23.08 with an estimated 40-hour work week. Hourly wages range from $15.71 an hour to $43.77 an hour. Warehouse workers also have an average 7% increase for job outlook in the coming years. This provides an excellent opportunity for job creation in a mixed-use environment. Number six, the subject property's request for reversion and a future land use map designation supports potential uses, given the property's location, access, and visibility, but it has not received equal treatment as other previous reversion requests that were granted. Next, the denial may be considered a taking as the property is not economically viable as it's currently zoned, the C3 with zoning, with conditions, as mentioned by Stacy earlier with the DRI and the impact, and there is not rational public policy justification for the denial of the reversion. The county has rendered future land use and zoning decisions based on unsupported conditions. The current zoning will not allow the property to be developed as the property can no longer meet the rezoning conditions established in 2016. The future land use map mixed use designation requires retail, commercial, and office use activities that need frontage for market viability, and the frontage for this parcel as a commercial corridor is non-existent. The reversion of the adjacent parcels enables those properties to pursue development based upon their previous zoning designations. Finally, the exclusion of light industrial activities to support a mixed-use center is arbitrary, capricious, and discriminatory because, again, you can create a mixed use using light industrial, we've seen it in many other locations, as horizontal mixed uses can be supportive of the comprehensive plan's intent to create a vibrant activity center promoting jobs, goods, and service delivery, and residential even when planned appropriately. So I would encourage you, based upon the analysis, to recommend to you, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, to approve the application for the comprehensive plan, land use amendment, future land use amendment, and the reversion.
Good evening. My name is Jean Esam. I'm currently a licensed real estate appraiser in the state of Georgia and hold a certified real estate appraiser designation. I am also designated as an MAI by the Appraisal Institute. I have 37 years of appraisal experience in income-producing properties, including multifamily, retail, nursing homes, motels, hotels, industrial, and other commercial properties such as vacant land, timberland, and subdivision developments. I have also been the chairperson for the Macon-Vibb County Planning and Zoning Commission for four years and have served as a commissioner since 2012. The subject site that we are discussing tonight contains about 53 acres and fronts North Bridges Road, an unpaved county road, also fronts I-75 and the northbound I-75 expressway. It has no direct frontage or access to Jonesboro Road or Mount Carmel Road. The site has access from North Bridges Road, but any commercial development would require this road to be widened and paved and the cost incurred by the developer. A larger retail user would not find this site a ready choice for development without frontage on Jonesboro Road. A retail sales facility is located south of the subject off of Mount Carmel Road, which sells semi-tractors, and its location with high visibility to the interstate is reasonable. Thank you.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition?
Commissioner Cannon? Chair, I would make a motion based on staff's denial that we deny this, please.
We've got a motion on the floor to uphold the staff's, and Commissioner Holmes, second that motion. And if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposition? Denominative vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is RZ 21-08, CHI acquisitions, LP of Atlanta, request a rezoning from C3 highway commercial to M1 light manufacturing for property located west of North Bridges Road and east of Interstate 75 in landlots 113 and 14 of the sixth district. The property consists of 53.85-plus acres, and the request is for a warehouse, District Three. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. So this hearing at this time is, is the corresponding rezoning hearing for the, the same subject So we're talking about the same 53 acres, we're talking about the same location on North Bridges Road, it has the same frontage on I-75 and visibility and so forth, it's just that this is the hearing that would re- It's just that this is the hearing that would rezon it from C3 with the current set of conditions to M1, allowing for this over 400,000-square-foot big-box warehousing and distribution center. In staff's evaluation, we've noted the character of the area. We've noted the future land use map. We've noted the fact that North Bridges is a So, yeah, we've noted the state of North Bridges Road, and we've noted the fact that this will, we're talking about truck traffic here, not as well as typical vehicle traffic. So we've noted traffic. We've noted the future land use map. We've noted the character of the area. And all this is in the staff report and in your exhibits as well. But we do recommend denial of the applicant's request for M1. That being said, staff has noted that the existing conditions for that C3 as it's currently zoned does require the inclusion of these other acreages that were rezoned to RA after the Henry Promenade had received its initial approval. So staff is going to go a little bit further and recommend that this board not only deny the applicant's request, but to approve an alternate zoning that is supported by the mixed-use land use designation on the future land use map. So we're recommending approval of mixed use. And we've prepared certain conditions, that that's something that this board would like to consider. But yes, we think that that's going to be preferable to simply denying it with the problematic conditions. Let's deny the M1 but approve mixed use with appropriate conditions, and we'd be very happy to have that conversation.
So Stacy, your recommendation, staff's recommendation, is to deny the M1?
Yes.
And you have a recommendation to change it to a mixed use?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. All those that are wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. We have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask that Mr. John McGarrett come forward? Jean Easton will speak and finish up her testimony while Mr. McGarrett is coming up. Jean, if you'll come. Go ahead, Jean. Jean's going to conclude her testimony from that she started before. And just so we're clear on the record, the affidavits of the four witnesses here have been submitted as part of the record, along with their reports, and has been included for you for staff's review prior to this hearing.
Thank you. I have prepared an analysis of the highest and best use of this property as it is currently zoned. That report is, has been presented to you, which was filed with the county for their land use and reversionary rezoning request. In short, I conclude that in my report, that is, this property has very limited potential for development as it is zoned now, thereby substantially limiting its economic viability. That is not the case if you rezon it to M1, the property's highest and best use. Therefore, it should be rezoned to reach its highest and best use. Thank you.
John, if you'll go ahead.
My name is John McGarrett. I'm a real estate broker licensed by the state of Georgia. And received that broker's license on March 3, 1987. I received my real estate license on about 1966. My license is placed with John McGarrett Realty, which I serve as broker. I specialize in the sale of raw land for redevelopment. Harold McGarrett, my uncle, who is deceased, purchased the subject property in September 1993. In 1988, he applied to rezon the property from RA to C2 to M1. I have marketed the subject property for the past 22 years. The property remained M1 until 2015, when Henry Promenade LLC requested a rezoning to C3 and a comprehensive plan amendment from medium-high residential to commercial for the property to be developed as a large-scale commercial shopping center. Several surrounding RA-zoned properties were also rezoned to C3 for Henry Promenade. Unfortunately, the shopping center project ultimately failed because Henry Promenade was unable to acquire the necessary investments and commitments from any significant retail anchor. Therefore, several of the owners of the adjoining properties sought to have their properties reverted or zoned back to their previous zoning classifications of RA. Each such request was approved by the Board of Commissioners for Henry County in contradiction to the Henry County Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map. Despite years of marketing, I have not received an offer to purchase the subject property under its current zoning of C3 with conditions after the failure of the Promenade project. This is not surprising to me with my years of experience because without an anchor commercial retail store and road frontage on Jonesboro Road, the subject property as C3 is without any economic value. Commercial offers and contracts for the subject property that were made prior to the Promenade project also failed because of a lack of road frontage on Jonesboro Road. During the time I have marketed the subject property, there have also been no contracts or offers for high-density residential uses such as apartments, nor have been there any offers for office uses of the subject property. In fact, the owners currently have the subject property under contract to Crowe Holdings Industrial LLC. My son Nathan McGarrett and I have been marketing the subject property for commercial C3 users without any viable commercial end-users for the last six years. It is my professional opinion that the subject property has no economic value as commercially zoned. Based upon my experience, the highest and best use of the subject property is M1 industrial zoning and uses. It is a request of the owners that the Henry County Board of Commissioners treat the owners and subject property the same as the aforementioned property owners of the adjoining properties and revert the subject property zoning back from C3 to M1. To do otherwise would violate the owner's constitutional rights.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is John Bateman.
And I'm a director of the Atlanta office for Crowe Holdings Industrial, who is the future owner and proposed developer of the property. Crowe Holdings Industrial is one of the largest industrial developers in the nation, and we specialize in building Class A distribution and light industrial facilities. I've worked in industrial real estate development for almost 11 years and have been directly associated with the ground-up development of more than 10 million square feet of industrial real estate projects. And since opening the Atlanta office almost five years ago, we've developed about 7 million square feet consisting of 22 buildings and 15 different projects around northern Georgia. This project would be our third industrial project in Henry County within the last three years. We are here tonight to seek reversion through rezoning of the property on North Bridges Road from its current conditional C3 heavy commercial zoning back to its former zoning classification of M1 to build a proposed light industrial facility that we refer to as North Bridges Logistics Center. This subject property has a strong logistical location, given its immediate access to I-75, its proximity to the growing population base of the south side of Atlanta, access to utilities and transportation infrastructure, and the industrial character of the nearby properties. The site is bordered by I-75 to its west, and it's not immediately adjacent to any dense residential areas. It does not have any frontage on Jonesboro Road, which is not necessary for our proposed logistics facility but would be necessary for the development of a commercial development. We've researched the nearby land uses and industrial uses such as mechanical repair and outdoor storage of tractor-trailer trucks, as well as outdoor storage of extensive landscaping materials are used nearby on Mount Carmel Road and have an industrial character. Separating the subject property from Jonesboro Road are C3-zoned properties, which have paved access to Jonesboro infrastructure and are subdivided for heavy commercial uses. However, all of those properties are overgrown with trees and have sat undeveloped because no one has purchased these properties for the heavy commercial use. Given the nearby zonings and land uses, an M1 zoning for the North Bridges Logistics Facility will be compatible with those other uses. Given the duration in which the property and the other C3-zoned properties have sat on the market without any commercial viable user, this property has no economic value as commercially zoned. From a marketing standpoint, our development is the highest and best use of the subject property. Thank you for your time this evening.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners for Henry County. At the heart of this request is to be treated the same as all the other property owners that have joined this property. We're asking that you treat us the same as the four other property owners that have sought reversion from the Board of Commissioners as early as 2016, 15, 16, and I think in 17. The reversion requests were to revert their properties that were zoned to C3 commercial for the Promenade. And Which way, down? For the Promenade project in 2016, all these properties in that corridor from Mount Carmel to the interstate to Jonesboro Road to the expressway entrance was all zoned together as C3 commercial for one major retail plaza that would have anchor stores in it. That project failed, and each of the property owners that are indicated by this overhead in the green boxes were all granted a reversionary request. They asked to have their property rezoned back to the RA that they were before. All we're asking for is the same treatment. They got their request, we should get ours. All of those requests, important to this process, none of the requests to RA were consistent with the future land use map or the comprehensive plan at the time of those requests. So the board decided to go against that plan and give them their same rezoning, their old rezoning. That's all we're asking for in this. And mixed use, look at this map here, please. This shows there is already industrial zoning almost adjacent to this property along I-75. The zoning is here on your current zoning maps, both of these corridors of light industrial, and then, of course, on the future land use map as well. To deny this request would be to violate their constitutional rights, and we outline those in our letters that we've submitted to the board. We ask that you grant our request for an M1 zoning.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to come, to come forward to speak in opposition? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Commissioner Cannon?
Madam Chair.
Oh.
Just a point of clarification. I would like to put in the record that the last two witnesses, Mr. McGarrett and Mr. Bateman, were not sworn in. So if the court reporter and our county clerk can make that a part of the record, please.
Thank you.
Chair.
This board All four of them were being sworn in at the same time at the beginning of the hearing?
He did.
I know the first two were up front here, the front, but the other two were behind them.
He did.
Okay.
Thank you for clarification, Mr. Welch. Go ahead, Commissioner Cannon.
Chair, I'm of the opinion that we have very qualified staff, and this board relies on them and their guidance. And with that being said, I would make a motion that we follow staff's lead and deny this M1. And if those parties are interested, I would agree with the mixed use.
And so we have a motion on the floor. Second?
Second?
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Cannon, second from Commissioner Wilson. There's no further discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy.
Just for clarification, Madam Chair, if I might. Commissioner Cannon, as part of our recommendation for mixed use, we drafted some conditions for the board's consideration. I'd be happy to go through those if you think that's appropriate. If you'd like me to read those into the record, if you want to go with them, or if there are any changes at all, please just let us know, but I wanted that clarification.
Okay, so will you read the recommendations of conditions into the record?
Chair, I need to get a little clarification on what the motion is.
Yes.
So is it a motion to deny the M1 and approve MU? Because I think his question was if the applicant is amenable. So I think we need to call the applicant back and ask if the applicant is amenable to that request.
Okay.
Thank you for the question and the clarification, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is the first that we are hearing of this proposal, and we have not seen any of the proposed conditions, so we would not be able to consent to that tonight.
Okay.
And we would vocalize an objection to that. We don't believe that that zoning would either, would likewise be constitutional. Thank you.
Okay, then, so
Let me just join in with Andy in supporting that. These conditions we haven't seen. The zoning, we say, is unconstitutional. Therefore, any of the conditions you put on there are also going to be unconstitutional. And we think that the applicant should be given an opportunity to review and properly present their position relative to these proposed conditions. The conditions that exist on the property today are impossible to comply with because this board has already reverted properties that are contained in that, in that original C3 zoning.
Okay, sir, you have had your say. Thank you very much. Let's just go with the motion of the denial from Commissioner Cannon. We got a second by Commissioner Wilson. He doesn't want, we're just going to deny it. It's not going to be changed. So can you state your motion for clarity?
Yes. The motion is to follow staff's lead and deny the change to M1.
So we got a motion. And we got a second by Commissioner Wilson, and that is to deny. All in favor? Uh, yes.
I have a question about this property. I heard a lot of conversation about it does not touch Jonesboro Road and that the entrance and exit was somewhere else. It looks like, where is it coming out at? And if they make a left or right, is that road that's in white going towards Roanoke? Is that Mill Road that they would come out and make a right and cross?
So Commissioner, that's an excellent question. Where it says, "Subject property outlined in green," this road that goes directly north-south is North Bridges Road. It is a dirt road, but it connects Jonesboro Road at this point with Mount Carmel Road at this point, all on the east side of I-75. So once you cross over I-75, you get to where the roundabout's going. This is Mill Road. So this subject property has a lot of frontage and a lot of visibility on I-75, but as far as vehicular access, you would have to access this dirt road to get to the subject property.
And when the subject property comes out, where does it cross over 75? And when the subject property comes out, where does it cross over 75?
The subject property never makes it properly to Mount Carmel, but it's very close. It's almost across from that Sterling Road where they sell the large equipment dump trunks and so forth at Mount Carmel, at the bridge that crosses over I-75. But the subject property itself does not extend as far as Mount Carmel.
But can they take that road to Mount Carmel? Is it a road?
It's a dirt road, but yes, they would have to improve that to a county standard. Correct.
Yeah. So the traffic would come out of there and come straight to Mount Carmel?
It would be closest to access Mount Carmel, and the county code does require that they improve that road up to where the road already meets the standard, and the closest point would be Mount Carmel Road.
Okay.
Is that it, Commissioner Clemens? Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Chair, I definitely think we need to go back, if it's just a five-minute recess, to check the swearing-in of those two individuals because that's critical. He entered some information into the record, so we need to verify if those individuals were sworn in. Ms. Patel has reviewed it, and it does not appear that it occurred. And so we need to make sure that we have the record accurately reflect whether those individuals were sworn in. So I would respectfully ask, nothing for a two-minute recess for us to look at that video and make sure so that we can enter the correct information into the record.
Okay, let's take a recess for two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. The first order of business is that we are going to... Commissioner Cannon, do you need to rescind your motion first?
Yes. So I would like to remove the motion to deny, and then we have some things to clear up, please.
Okay. So I am going to turn it over to the county attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a point of clarification, after reviewing the live feed, we did see that Mr. Bateman and Mr. McGarrett were not sworn in, so I would request that is made a part of the record.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we table this based on some clarification from staff, please.
Okay, and we're going to table it to what date?
Till November 3rd, please.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Stacy.
Yes, ma'am. Planning staff agrees with that assessment, Commissioner, and we would recommend, since this public hearing's already been held, that we table the vote on this item to November the 3rd.
Will that allow the applicant the opportunity to review?
Yes, ma'am. So planning staff will make our recommendation of mixed use with conditions available to the applicant team, and we'll also make sure that any questions are answered by the Board of Commissioners as well.
Okay.
My concern is that the applicant have an opportunity to review the recommendation from staff.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and if we go with that, that will give the applicant ample opportunity.
Okay, so the request has been made to table this item. Okay, so got a motion from Commissioner Cannon to table?
Yes.
And got a second from Commissioner Thomas. If there... Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you cannot. You're going to refuse to allow me to testify?
Absolutely. You're out of order, and I'm going to have you removed, so you need to go and sit down. Okay, so you're not in a courtroom. You're not in a courtroom. This is a public hearing, and you've had your opportunity to speak, so you need to go and have a seat. Thank you so much. Approval of the minutes, August 3rd, 2021, regular BOC meeting. August 17th, 2021, call meeting, executive session. August 17th, 2021, regular Board BOC mission. Motion to approve all three minutes. Got a motion from Commissioner Thomas. Can I get a staff in? Commissioner Cannon, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Upcoming meetings, November 3rd at 9:00 a.m. is a regular BOC meeting. Meeting is on Wednesday due to the election day. November 9th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. is a virtual call workshop meeting on purchasing policy, state contract procedure, and a capital project update. Please see website for ways to tune in to this meeting. November 16th, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. is a regular BOC meeting. November 30th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. is a regular BOC meeting. Note, will be held as the first December meeting due to holidays. December 14th, 2021, regular BOC meeting at 6:30 has been canceled. Meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a good evening.